To open us up with prayer.
Good and loving God, we thank you for creating the world and our community and all and all this beauty. We thank you for memory, which enables us to build on the experiences of the past. We thank you for imagination, which admits us to a wider world than we could otherwise know. And we thank you for foresight by which we plan for the future. Blessed this unseen work that we shall do on behalf of the citizens of Hendersonville. In faith and hope, we trust in your presence and guidance today, and we wish for your prayers for those of us that need help with our families, specifically Mr. Alzheimer, Altizer. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer is absent. Coker.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Slattery is absent, and Silkwood. All right, that is, let's see, seven present.
Thank you. There are seven. That is a quorum. Next on our agenda is an acceptance of the agenda. Has everybody gotten a chance to review? Do we have a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Longmire and a second from Commissioner Silkwood, I believe that was. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. We have accepted the agenda. We have one public hearing tonight. I did not notice if anybody was signed up for that. Director Freed, did we had if anybody sign up, to your recollection?
Let me just look.
Okay. No, we had a couple folks just come in. Just wanted to make sure that nobody was here to speak at the public hearing on the Triangle property development on that. Just wanted to give everybody an opportunity if that was their intent here to speak on that.
I'm not here to speak.
Okay. With that being the case, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed on that. Next item on the agenda is minutes from our May meeting. I think everybody's had the opportunity to review those. I am going to abstain from the vote on this because I unfortunately had to miss the May meeting on that, but I will entertain a motion to approve the amendments. We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood. Can I get a second?
Second.
I'm going to, I think I heard Commissioner Longmire first on that, so we've got the motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. And I just again would like to mark myself down as abstention on that since I was absent. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We did have an acceptance of the agenda. So that usually works with the assumption that there is nothing anybody wanted to pull off the consent agenda, but even with that, I'll just give Grant the opportunity to very quickly just touch on these couple items that are on the consent agenda, just to tell us very, very briefly what's going on there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are two sections for Millstone, which is a development plan for area off of Saundersville Road. And this is for Section Six and Section Seven, Phase One, I believe. And so they've addressed all the staff comments. They've, one of the items that we talked about was adding an area, like a pull-off area for a kiosk for the mailbox for USPS, and they've agreed to do that as well for Phase Six. So we're there in agreement with all the staff comments, and everything's ready, matches the development plan.
Yep. Thank you, Grant. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with all staff comments.
So moved.
This is Commissioner Evans that made the motion. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Martin. Lauren, will you call the roll on this, please?
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all seven.
Thank you. Next up is Item Seven, Development Plans. The first one that we have up is the Triangle, Phase Two. Timothy, I believe that you were the lead staff on this. Well, where is Timothy? There you are. Will you tell us a little bit about what we've got going on here, please?
Sure. Now, well, before I do the staff report, I will point out, you should have been given some emails from Lori Achley, who's the owner of the property. I think the gist of those emails is that she could not be here tonight and is leading up to the Planning Commission whether or not to defer or not.
And Timothy, forgive me, normally, obviously, I use this opportunity to invite representatives from the development here, but I was under the assumption that I did not have any representative. That is correct. Correct. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So this is a request to amend the master plan for the Triangle to allow motor vehicle service repair minor as allowed use on the vacant lot that's just south of the Shackle Washington Car Wash that's currently under construction. Normally, for a request like this, that's in a planned development, we ask for and get a conceptual layout of the site and some building elevations, showing what the building is going to look like and what the materials are going to be. However, the applicant wants to get approval of the use before they develop any plans. We did get a layout and elevation for a site that's in a different state, but it's not really clear if they would be proposing the same thing here. And the building elevations are not really specific as to materials and things like that. So I think what we're really left with is just consideration of the, whether the use is appropriate for this, for this site. And this would be limited, if it's approved, the use would be limited to this particular lot.
Questions, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I looked at the proposed plan, and other than the materials, the bricks and that sort of thing, it looks like they're talking about putting in a nice place. And driving down the road, any of us can see that there are plenty of cars around here that obviously are going to be needing repair. It appears to fit with the other two facilities that are already there, and it is bordered on two sides by a road. So from that perspective, I think it's an appropriate use of that piece of property.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Although we don't have the applicant here, you know, maybe Mr. Whitten or someone from the planning staff could, would there be enough space on this particular parcel so that the overhead garage doors could be, could face maybe where the new car wash is going to go? I mean, the way I see it, you know, the overhead garage doors are going to have to face either New Shack or Old Shack, and there are some residences, actual homes there at Old Shack. So that's my concern. Where exactly, how would that exactly fit on that lot?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I agree, they would have to face one street or the other. There may be a possibility they could face north, in other words, parallel with Old Shack, but I don't know what the site constraints are. I don't have enough information to make that judgment.
Director Freed?
Yeah, this, with the lack of the information as toward the building and how the building is placed on there, if the Planning Commission wanted to approve the ad use, then it could just approve the ad use, but maybe noting that from the site layout and the building design, that that would be scrutinized during the site plan process, which would still have our issue with if the garage doors were facing a street, then through the site plan process, there'd either need to be not facing the street or some kind of mitigation that would be acceptable to the Planning Commission.
Can we tentatively approve this with staff review of whatever plan comes in to see if it meets the requirements and see if we can put the doors on the north side facing the other two auto facilities, for example?
I think you could make that a condition, that that will be scrutinized at the site plan stage. Keith, I'm not really sure. I don't think you could make the use itself conditional.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Whitten. I think certainly you can approve the use and say this type of use would be allowed, just with the acknowledgement that it would just go through our typical site plan process and be scrutinized through that. And that's not just through the staff, site plan through the normal process. If this ad use was approved, it would have to come back to the Planning Commission and get approved. It wouldn't be anything approved at the staff level. So, yes, you could do, in essence, of what you're talking about, but it would equate to approving the ad use with the understanding that the site plan will go back through the normal process, and all that would be scrutinized just like we would any other site plan.
Well, so bottom line is, we need to decide if we wanted auto service at that particular location.
That's correct.
On that parcel. So I would love to hear from someone else on that.
Commissioner Martin?
The applicant is by right to add that, correct? That use?
No, this is a planned development, so there are limited uses that are allowed. And then the applicant is requesting to add this use to the planned development. So like on straight zoning, since this is commercial, then you've got all these different uses that you could have in commercial. Could be car washes, could be oil change facilities, could be car maintenance places and things like that. But then a planned development drops a lot of those uses and just picks a few of them. And then that's what this planned development has done. And now this planned development is wanting to pick up a use that's in general commercial and elevate it to the planned development. So it's not by right right now, although it's by right in the underlying zone, but unless the Planning Commission adds it as a use, it wouldn't be by right. It has to be requested.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hardwick?
So what all is included with auto service slash repair minor? Is that going to be tire store, oil change, is the items that you were mentioning, Christian Brothers Automotive type?
Yes.
Firestone, not?
But not things like transmission repair, body and collision repair? That would be major. This is minor, which includes things like you're talking about tires, oil changes, service, maintenance, that kind of stuff.
So the company that was referenced in the emails, and I clearly understand why the applicant is not here. She's doing other work, as she should be based on what we read in the emails today. But I did go to their website, and the building looked nice, but they talk about engine repairs and all types of European auto repairs. And I'm just bewildered if you're wanting to open a shop in Tennessee, why you wouldn't care enough to show up and tell us about your business.
I did reach out and convey what the distinction was between auto repair minor and major, and he did confirm that he was thinking minor.
Okay. I'm going to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Hardwick there on that. I am, I'd be very, very, very apprehensive about approving tonight without having the opportunity to question the applicant about anything. There's just too many, just too many unknowns here on that. I mean, to be honest, my first inclination would just be to deny the request because looking at the current master plan, the convenience sales, retail trade, restaurant and office, this is very detailed change, and I know that there's a car wash there now, or very substantive change. I know there's a car wash there now. But I would at least like to give them a fair shake. In fairness, I know there's been an email reference. I've been in Murfreesboro all day, so I did not get a chance to read that email. I came straight here from that. But that being said, I think at worst, we need to defer and give the applicant the opportunity to come appear before us next month and ask questions then on that. So I'm going to make a motion to defer. Director Freed?
Yeah, if we do, if the Planning Commission does choose to defer, we need to make a part of that to reopen the public hearing. And then that way, our notice for the public hearing is still going, the folks that attended this evening to hear it. It would still be open in next month. And then also, we'll send out letters just to remind people that it's been extended. But if a part of that could be reopening that public hearing until next month, that would be good.
Then I'm going to make a motion to defer with reopening the public hearing for next month. Got a second from Commissioner Evans. Thank you. Lauren, will you call the roll on that, please?
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all seven.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Item A. Items A is site plans. First one up is floor and decor. Timothy, you have this one as well. Sorry, representative from the developer here on that one. You step up the podium and introduce yourself, please. I'm going to let you speak after Timothy kind of kicks us off on that, but if you would introduce yourself first.
Yep. I'm a development developer for floor and decor here.
Okay.
My name's Mitchell Vizbarra, and then with us today, I have Brandy Crawford, who is the project manager for floor and decor. We have our head, Civil, who is Joseph McCowen with Haynes Gibson and Associates. And we have our head architect, which is Omari Latmore with SBLM.
Okay. We may bring all of y'all up to ask questions on that. We'll just keep you all on the spot. But Timothy, if you could go on and kick us off.
Okay, thank you. This site's located on Indian Lake Boulevard across from the Cajun Steamer Restaurant that just recently opened. It's a zone GCPD, General Commercial Plan Development, and it is in the Indian Lake Center Plan Development. Floor and Decor is a retail goods use as classified in our ordinance. So it's an allowed use in this planned development. It will be a single floor, 74,857 square foot building. They are requesting two waivers. The first is for a parking reduction. A retail goods store of this size is required to provide a minimum of 300 parking spaces. That's at a ratio of four per thousand, four per thousand gross building square feet. They're proposing and showing on their layout plan, 234 spaces, which works out to a parking ratio of 3.12 spaces per thousand square feet. And they are requesting that the remaining 66 spaces to be waived. Yesterday, they submitted a parking and traffic generation study, which y'all should have copies of. They were just handed out to support their request. And I'll leave that to Mitchell to go through that methodology and the conclusions that it arrives at, if y'all would like him to. The second waiver that they're requesting has to do with the number of parking rows in front of their building. This planned development limits the street frontage lots to have no more than two rows of parking between the building and the street. Floor and Decor is requesting to be allowed to have four rows. The standard of two rows has been consistently applied throughout Indian Lake Center, as well as Indian Lake Village, which is north of the railroad tracks. There is one site, the old theater, now Life Church, that does not comply with that. That was the first site built on Indian Lake Boulevard and under a different phase and under different design guidelines. So I would point out, this site is a little bit unique in that they are, they're going to have a 30-foot wide stream buffer between the parking lot and the street. And so I believe that stream buffer would have all the existing vegetation that's there now. Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong. They retain all that existing vegetation within that 30-foot width. And that will be, again, that will be in between this proposed four-row parking lot and the stream. So that's a little bit unique compared to the other sites along Indian Lake. The, beyond those waivers, the applicant does want to discuss some of the staff comments. They provided their responses or questions to staff comments. You should have copies of those. Looks like this. So the original staff comments are in black, their question or response is in red, and then staff's response to their response is in blue. We did provide that to the applicant yesterday, but they wanted to discuss each of those with the Planning Commission tonight. Now, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Timothy. I've had the opportunity to introduce yourself. Is there anything you'd like to add in addition to that before we open up for questions here?
Yeah, I think just to begin, if I could just give kind of a brief rundown of what the parking study is. I know we sent that over. That's kind of, I think, going to be the big topic here. So, yeah, I've read through pretty much as much Indian Lake Center and City of Hendersonville municipal code as one can possibly probably do. It's become very clear that basically one of the missions that you all have set in place by the design guidelines is to eliminate mass parking by restricting impervious areas and to create a product that is visually pleasing and eco-friendly. Based off the site plan that we've actually produced, that's one of our missions as well here. We prefer not to provide any more parking than what we know we need. And more importantly, with the parking study here, we think we have the proof to show that even with 234 parking stalls is more than enough for our site. So I think everyone should have a parking study in front of them. If you don't, I have some extras. I'm just going to mention some pages, and we can walk through it really quick. So basically, in front of you is the parking study. That's our most recent parking study from May 2023. It was prepared by Kim Lee Horn. While this study is not specific to our site, it is worth mentioning that this is based off of eight of the floor and decor's that represent the best performing stores in each of their respective markets, and were selected as the stores anticipated to have the highest parking and generation, trip generation rates. So that can be found on page one. Basically, that goes through the eight stores at the end of page one. The following pages, two through 10, are a bird's eye view, a site plan of those eight stores. So basically, they are just picture of each store there. That's pages eight through 10. If you could flip to page 11, it's kind of where we have the conclusion and results of the parking data. So basically, the end, the last sentence of this first paragraph on page 11 says, "The average weekday AM peak parking rate for the eight stores was 0.45 spaces per 1,000 square foot. The average weekday PM parking rate was 0.43 spaces per 1,000 square foot, and the average Saturday peak rate was 0.59 spaces per 1,000 square foot." If you just flip one page further, which is page 12, that goes through basically all eight stores, puts the parking rate, spaces per 1,000 square foot of gross leased area, and adds it all up. So basically, based off of, like Timothy said, the 74,857 square foot commercial retailer with the permitted use of retail good establishment, our minimum parking count required by code is 300 stalls. Our site plan shows 354. Based off of this, Table One, even at the average peak parking hours, our store would only require roughly 37 parking stalls to adequately meet our average customer demand. That number is an average. It does fluctuate, but you can see even based off of the highest number count recorded by Kim Lee Horn during the study, was on Saturday, December 3, at 1:30 for the Doral Florida site, and that only occupied 80 parking spaces. So we do believe that 234 is more than enough for our store. If you're wondering kind of how we stay in business with such low parking count, our sales team with floor and decor, they put together a bunch of numbers. Our average price per customer when they walk in the door is about 500 bucks, meaning that while our customer traffic is low compared to our competitors, the average price, or the average purchase price is much higher. Basically, think about it holistically. Our customers don't come in frequently, but when they do, to buy marble countertop, backsplash, counters, flooring product, it's usually on the higher end of the purchase. So basically, for that reason, with the use of the parking study, we believe that 234 parking spaces is more than enough.
Before I open it up to other commissioners, I just have a question or a couple of questions myself. Obviously, we're talking about your business specifically on this, but in not being familiar with y'all's business on this, has there ever been a time that y'all have vacated a space on that or moved to a new store, or just closed a store, or anything like that? And if you want to bring in some outside help on that, do so, please. And where I'm going with this, I want to know what type of operation would come in and occupy that space next? Because we've got to think about that. We've got to consider y'all's needs, but we've also got to think about that space is still going to be there regardless on that. So that's just what I want to kind of get a little bit of sense of as well.
Sure. Brandy Crawford Design with Floor and Decor. So I'm not aware of us closing stores. So we're mostly new to markets at this point.
Okay.
We're on our 200 store, so we're a fairly new retailer. We're just now exploring new markets. I'm not aware of a store that we've closed to date.
Okay. I appreciate you didn't help at all, but I appreciate you asking questions. Thank you. I'll open it up to other commissioners as well to ask questions.
I did want to point out one more thing that I forgot related to the building architecture. Architect has come a long way. They've really put in a lot of effort into their building. Looks a lot better than it started off. We do have, I do have a staff comment. There are some outstanding markups that need to be addressed. They've agreed to do that, to work with staff on those, but I do appreciate their work on the architecture.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Reading through the planning staff comments and summary, it appears that there are front-facing door, or street-facing overhead doors that you all are planning to construct. Can someone walk me through exactly how that's going to look? That's not something we typically allow. I know that planning staff had said they feel like it might meet the ordinance because it's set back and recessed. Could someone kind of walk us through what that looks like?
Sure. I'll have our architect speak for that one.
Good day. Omari Latmore with SBLM Architects. So basically, in response to that question, the roll-up door is almost as shown. It's pretty much not your standard metal roll-up gate that you would see in a service area. Being that this is front-facing, what we typically have is, what I mentioned previously, a metal roll-up gate. But with regard to this being front-facing in this jurisdiction, we went with an alternate overhead-style gate with glazed, inset glazing. uh, we went with an alternate overhead-style gate with glazed, uh, inset glazing. Um, and it is set back nineteen feet, six inches from the front of the building. So generally, you, you don't typically see the roll-up door from, really even the parking lot, from a few spaces, uh, ahead and from the, uh, from the street. So I, I wish I had a, a blow-up image of what that door looks like. Uh, but it is much more aesthetically pleasing than what is typically used on a floor and decor, a prototypical building.
And so what, what is the purpose of having a, a front-facing roll-up door? Why not place that in the back? I mean, assuming it's for deliver, pickups and things like that, why could that not go to the side, to the rear? Talk me through that a little bit.
So I would say, based on the, the constricted site or restrictions on the sides of the building, in order for customers to safely and properly maneuver, um, in, in and out of the, 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 the two pickup spaces in the building, they need an ample amount of space to safely maneuver. And by placing it on the front of the building, it doesn't interfere with, uh, the, uh, the service entrance that's, that's actually at the back of the loading dock. So we feel as though it's, it is a lot safer for that to be at the front of the building. It is also, I would say, is a little bit aesthetically pleasing. We, we even bumped up the parapet right in front of that CPU, uh, bay. It, it, it actually does draw customers to that area as well. And so with that being at the front of the building, it is easy for customers to locate. Uh, it's easy for them to, you know, safely pull up and for the forklift to, from the inside of the building, load, load the vehicles.
I guess I just have some concerns that this is going to set a precedent in the city, and we're going to have a lot more requests to do things like this if we allow such a, such a large overhead door to face the street. So that's all I have on that.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Director Free?
Yeah, on the, on the overhead door, as Mr. Whitten had said, there's still outstanding things that, uh, on the elevation, uh, that the, uh, that Floor and Decor, uh, still has agreed to work out with, with staff. One of those things was in that area where that doorway is, even though it's recessed back. One of the things that, uh, we were working with them on but have not, uh, have not come to what it exactly is yet was the possibility of maybe arcing that, where that it's more of a, of an arch instead of a cut-off, uh, squared-off, which, you know, maybe would be more aesthetically pleasing, um, for that. Uh, but we haven't, we haven't worked that out yet, but I did want to share, uh, share that as well.
And we did, we, our initial markups did point out the restriction about overhead doors, um, and asked for that overhead door to be moved, but after talking with Architect and Mitchell, we understand they have their, their standard, uh, operating, ways of operating their store. This is how they, uh, I think it, it was pretty important to them to have this, this orientation. And, you know, based on the fact that it is recessed, we think it merits some consideration. But again, it's, it's pointed out in the staff report. We had that blow-up so that y'all can make that determination yourselves.
Commissioner Hardwick.
Knowing this was going to be an issue, I'm really surprised you guys didn't bring a color mock-up of what this was going to look like, but, um, we don't have it. So is the inset, how wide is it compared to how wide the door is? And I'm assuming that door is going to be at a four-foot dock high, that people will bring trailers in, or is it grade level? Explain a little bit about that and then the different widths of the, what we're talking about.
Sure. So the primary opening at the, at the front facade of the building is fourteen feet high by thirty-two feet wide.
Okay.
And that's framed with a, with a bent metal plate painted to match the building. And then inset nineteen and a half feet will be a twelve-foot wide by fourteen-foot high roll-up door. Um, now, the door and the entire CPU bay is flush with grade. It's not, it's not a recessed dock, so, so there won't be any trailers, uh, or, or large, you know, WB sixty-seven trucks coming in there. It's really for general customer pickup, uh, whether it's a pickup truck or a contractor work van of that sort.
Trailer.
Sorry?
Like a constru, like a six, six, twelve-foot, sixteen-foot-type trailer, not tractor trailer.
Yeah, yeah, not, not a tractor trailer, so.
Work trailer.
Right, so a work trailer does have the ability to roll in there. And then as far as store operations goes, this is, on the inside, behind those doors, uh, would be, you know, the bulk items. And so a forklift does have the ability to come out, that's, that's store-operated, and either load that trailer or load the pickup truck, um, so that way the customers can go on their way. Uh, but this is not a, it's not a recessed dock, uh, anything similar to, to a, to a prototypical loading dock.
And, and I understand the reason you guys did not want to do it on the side is because there's really not enough room between parking lot, property line, to have a truck and trailer, sixteen-foot trailer, whatever size pickup truck to get it and make the turns to get it in there.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the, the, just outside of that, uh, primary opening are two parking spaces. So those parking spaces are not inset within that, within that nineteen-foot bay. Uh, they're actually outside of the building, so when you add that plus the drive aisle, uh, we, we were trying to limit, you know, the, the possibility of an accident with maneuverability.
Clearly understand that. Um, the, the, just following up a little bit of what Commissioner Coker said is that one of the things we as a planning commission always look at is not what is the fir, not only the first use, but what the second use might be. And clearly, three point four, three point five parking spaces is not going to be enough for a, because you asked the question, what would it be? Seventy-five thousand square foot building is going to be a grocery store. It's going to get split in half, maybe be a half be a furniture store, half something else, um, an air trampoline park. Something like that. So three and a half parking spaces is not going to cut it.
Thank you. Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, um, it says in the notes, you all are subdividing a lot off a much, much larger parcel. Can you not purchase some more property and make some of these things happen? Have a, have the pickups on the side and allow for the parking that's required and all of these things? I think part of the problem is you've, you've self-limited a little bit on the size of the subdivision.
Yeah, well, you're absolutely right. That's a viable option. I think it just kind of goes back to maybe my original point that we don't want to basically provide more parking than what we know we absolutely need. And I think based off of a lot of the code I read, um, it doesn't look like you guys are looking for a large commercial retailer with a, a large mass parking lot next to it that's never going to get used as well.
Commissioner Evans.
It seems to me that the, the size story you're putting on this piece of property is, is, uh, too big for the piece of property. And not only are we shortening the number of parking spaces, your request is, is to reduce the parking by sixty-six, you're also adding for, or asking for four rows of parking in the front. And in addition, you're adding a, an overhead door for customer pickup in the front. The whole thing, to me, has a big-box store feel. And it, it just, in my way of thinking, that's really not what's on Indian Lake Road. And it, it just, uh, I, I would, I would like to see you attempt to, to get closer to what we have down there and what our requirements are. Otherwise, I, I can't vote for it.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, one fol, one just follow-up question. Do you all have stores that do not have front-facing overhead pickups, pickup areas?
We do have some, um, but most of the stores that we have do have the CPU directly in front of the store. The reason that we place the CPU in front here was to avoid having the CPU in the, in the rear, where the, where the loading docks are located. When we have the CPU and loading in the same areas, that's a true conflict with deliveries and then customers picking up products. So we do, we try to avoid that scenario in every case.
That makes sense, but I still think, um, harkening back to what Commissioner Evans said, I think if the parcel size were a little bit bigger, you could probably still separate out the pickup area with the delivery, large truck delivery area, um, and probably satisfy some of these requirements. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? I just wanted to kind of chime in. Um, I'm actually, I want to thank Commissioner Hardwick a little bit for his comments answering my questions. When he mentioned the trampoline park, it actually made me a little bit more comfortable with the reduced number of parking spaces there as for a future use down the road. And of course, the fact that you all have not closed any stores, that, that does help on that too, on that. But we are obviously looking thirty, forty, fifty years in, into the future on that too. Because I'm thinking one trampoline park here that is very popular, but the parking lot's never full on that too. I mean, it's just the nature of, and I've got kids that age. They load up several kids into one vehicle to go over there. You're not bringing, it's not typically a one-off type thing. Um, so I'm, I'm less concerned about the reduced number of parking spaces. And I'm, I'm a little bit okay with the four rows as well, just because we've got that stream buffer. That's my two cents on stuff, but that, like I said, that's my question to comment. Um, obviously, we need to take some action on some things, so I will entertain a motion from somebody if somebody wants to make one here on that.
Uh, would you just point out that, um, would you have some, uh, staff comments, um, that need to be disposed of? Either by discussion or by, if you make the motion to include staff comments, which means they have to, they have to comply with those comments.
Not seeing anybody wanting to jump. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve with the two variance requests and all staff comments. Can I get a second on that? Commissioner Hardwick.
So the, we're not considering the door to be a variance request then, correct?
That's not the way that I'm looking at it right now. I think that'd be under staff comments on that. Would that be correct, Timothy?
Uh, yes, um, but that, that, again, that's up to the planning commission.
I'll take an amendment to my motion if you wanted to address it.
I guess my question to you is, is do we want to lump all three of these together or do we want to talk, vote on them individually? How do you want, you're the chairman, you, you make the decision.
I'll withdraw my motion and let's take them individually then on that. That'd be good. So since you brought it up, would you like to make a motion, take them one by one here on this? So, okay.
It's the will of the commission. I'll make a motion.
All right.
That we, so we approve with all staff comments, and then we vote individually. And Director, help me here if I'm getting this wrong, that we will then turn around and vote individually on each of the variances. And so my motion is, is that we approve it without the variances first, with all staff comments, and then in turn, we will vote on each of the three variances that have been requested. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
We've got, we've got a motion and a second from Commissioner Martin.
I have a question.
Commissioner Silkwood.
Are we considering the overhead doors a variance even though it's not?
Yes.
I might just explain.
Doctor Free.
So, so what this would be, I think, with the way, uh, that you have it, Commissioner, is this vote will take place and either pass or fail. Assume it passes, then there'll be consecutive votes for the more, releasing the other restrictive things, and they may or may not pass.
And then they can choose if they want to proceed or not proceed.
Gotcha. Okay, yes.
Commissioner Hasty.
So we're going to vote to approve and then vote on the variances, huh?
Do I need to do it backwards and vote on the variances and then vote?
Yeah.
We could do it both ways. This is a little different than we've done it before, but we did this works.
I don't want to approve to approve something or another, then turn around and deny it based on a variance after we've already voted. I think we need to vote on the variances first.
We're going to do the variances first and then vote. And, okay, do I need to redo this motion again then?
Yes.
So I am making a motion that we vote on in the three individual variances, being the door, the four rows of traffic, and the reduced parking requirement. And then we'll, after those are voted on, we will then vote on approval of the project.
Everybody clear on that?
Second.
All right, we, yes, we've got a motion and a second from Commissioner Martin. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
For each one of the three, first the door.
Okay, uh, first for, first for the door.
First is the door. Then we'll go from the door, then we'll go to the fourth row of parking, and then to the reduced parking.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is, we're about to have a roll call though on the front door. So does everybody's click?
I got one quick question if I could before, the, uh, door is recessed and the front is brick. Are those recessed walls brick?
So those recessed walls are not brick.
What?
They are not brick.
They are not?
No, on the interior side of the building, they're not brick, but they are painted to match.
It's kind of.
Okay. It was, it was my, it was my understanding that they were to be brick.
Okay, I, I guess that, you know, it, it, it wouldn't be an issue to make them brick, construct, um, construction-wise or from a constructibility standpoint. Um, if that's going to, you know, help in, help in any way in this case.
I think that'd be very good. Let's make them brick.
We can definitely, we, we can change that to, without a problem.
They will be brick.
They will be brick.
So do I need to redo this again?
No.
Okay.
All right, so this first vote will be for the door with the brick sides.
Correct.
All right, let's see. Coker.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
No.
And Silkwood. And Coker.
You already called him.
Oh, I did. There we go. So I have two and four that passes. All right.
Can we redo that? There, there was, I, I know there were three no votes on that.
Should be seven.
Yeah.
Let's see. Um, Coker.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire. Martin.
No.
And Silkwood.
No.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, so that is four and three passes. So this next vote will be for the reduced number of parking spaces. Coker.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Hardwick.
This is for the reduced parking spaces?
Yes, the spaces count.
No.
Hasty.
No.
Longmire.
No.
Martin.
No.
And Silkwood. So that is six and, or one and six. That one does not pass. Okay, and the last one will be the increased, uh, parking rows in the front of the building. Uh, Coker.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
No.
Martin.
Yes.
Silkwood.
No.
So that one is four and three. It passes.
Thank, all right. Now, this one is obviously going to be the vote for the overall approval with all staff comments.
All right, so this one is, do we have a motion on that? Is that the same motion?
That was in, that was included in, Commissioner Hardwick's original.
And that would include the zero reduction on parking.
Correct.
And, uh, the other two are approved.
Correct.
So in other words, if I vote on it, he's going to come back with the correct number of parking spots.
Correct.
All right. Coker.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
No.
Martin.
Yes.
Slattery. Oh, she's not here, and Silkwood. All right. That is four and three. The overall site plan passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is the Ground Guys, a fence addition and a waiver request. Timothy, you have this one. And do we have a representative from the developer here as well? Timothy, if you want to go on and get us started here on this one?
So this arises out of a staff-approved project, which was a requirement to screen a gravel storage yard that was created next to the building. So the staff-approved plan is for the landscaping that's within that red box to screen that storage yard. So what's before you all tonight is that there's any ordinance states that they can have chain link fencing, but it has to be black or dark green or brown vinyl coated chain link fencing. Before the business was aware of that requirement, they installed galvanized chain link fencing. Their ask of y'all tonight is to not be required to replace that fencing with black vinyl coated chain link. Again, they will be doing... They'll have evergreen screening within that red box in front of the fence. They'll be doing that, but their request is about that chain link fencing specifically.
Thank you, Tim. Sir, if you would introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Brian Gray. I'm the owner of the Grounds Guys of Hendersonville. We are a national lawn and landscape franchise, and I'm the owner of the Hendersonville office.
Would you like to add anything to... What, Timothy?
No. I think we probably circumvented some early-on coating issues that we were unaware of and followed suit with all of our neighbors in that industrial area and put a fence up to meet the needs of our small business. And now we're kind of caught in the crosshairs. You know, financially, it's a huge undertaking to replace the fence. And I'm not sure that that's, quite frankly, survivable for us in the short term. But we're willing to screen in the existing fence with appropriate landscaping. We're a landscape company. We can do that fairly easily and affordably. The one difficult thing for us on that is product availability from the nurseries right now is really challenging. So we need kind of a long lead time to get there, to get that fence covered in an appropriate manner. Everything we see coming from the nurseries now is slow and small, and it's just taking long delivery times to get. But we're happy to screen that right side in. I do have some concerns about it being a corner lot in a busy intersection with potentially some safety factors with, you know, the master's gym with youth being across the street. And there's a CrossFit gym and a couple of other businesses up the hill. And I've seen that intersection, and I know that cars don't always stop at that stop sign. And I just would like to be on the record that screening in that corner, although may fall within the regulations that are written in the ordinance and the distance requirements and things from the edge of the street. I'm not sure that landscaping is at full growth, that it's going to be the most safe intersection. You know, that's my number-two concern, especially if the gymnastics and before-and-after-school care facility across the street stays. So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, could we have someone or Director Free show us the mock-up of the sightline layout for this intersection? Yeah, with the included landscaping there. So would somebody kind of walk us through this and how you all are saying that it's safe with the landscaping? Thank you.
Yes, that would be Stephen. Yes. So ASHTO has guidelines on stopping sight distance. And in this case, a vehicle, when it pulls up to a stop sign, it would be, you know, the front of the vehicle would more or less be at the white line. That's typically eighteen feet back from the edge of the adjacent roadway to the driver. And then you have your sightlines in each direction from there. At this particular intersection, this is just a mock-up I prepared to kind of show where that eighteen feet would be back to the driver's sight, which is well past the landscape area. You know, if people are going through that stop sign, it's an enforcement-type issue. They're violating the law by not stopping. It is stop-controlled, so...
It should be noted, and I just, if I can, that that is downhill. That road on the right there, it's uphill and downhill. So it's not a traditional, you know, two-dimensional, flat intersection there.
For clarity's sake, you'd be coming downhill.
Coming downhill to that stop sign, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I actually frequent this area quite a bit, and I know this intersection very well. You know, looking at the sightlines, I really don't think providing landscaping is going to be an issue here. We've kind of lost the street names on this look. But where that blue truck is, I believe that's Laverne, which is a dead end. I mean, there is traffic that comes up through there, but you stop right here. And you have pretty clear sightlines from where the stop sign is, in my experience. And then where the landscaping would be, really would not be an issue looking down to the right on Avondale. So, I mean, from my perspective, I can completely understand how, when you opened your business and you put in a chain link fence, that you thought that was okay. Because there are chain link fences all over that area. So I am fine with a waiver for this in this instance, as long as we can make sure that landscaping is provided. So that's all I have.
And we'll do the best that we can to landscape that. It's a lot, and it's going to take some time. You just be patient, and we'll get there.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, and I, too, am fine with the chain link fence. I couldn't figure out whether you were arguing against the landscaping in favor of replacing the fence.
No, no, no.
But it occurs to me that you don't want to do either. But it's like we had a meeting, I guess our last meeting, when we were discussing another area and sidewalks. And, well, there are no other sidewalks here. And I understand what you're saying about the chain link fences, because there are a bunch of others up there. And bottom line is, the arbor vitas, as you know, you're a grounds guy, they're not going to get wide. They're not going to get huge. And I believe it would be most appropriate just to landscape the fence and keep it tight the best you can. And we've got to start somewhere.
Yeah. No, I would agree. And there is a culvert drainage area there, kind of in that white line section. So we'll have to play a little bit with the landscaping to keep it out of that and still be functional and safe for everybody involved there. But we'll do the best we can along that fence line. We think so. If not, I'm not sure we should be there.
Can you give us a little bit of timeline? I mean, I understand freeze last year and all that sort of thing. Can you give us just good faith timeline on when you could get this done?
I've actually been waiting for four months now trying to get a new fence quote. And I can't even get a fence company to come give me a quote for a fence. So the whole service industry is out of whack right now, and us included. Projects for our customers, I mean, we're six to eight weeks out. I would ask, and I would implore, probably a six-month timeframe to get this landscaped. I mean, I think that would be fair.
I think six months is reasonable, based upon kind of knowledge that I have of other things, too. I just didn't want six months to become six years on that, so...
Well, I have four and a half years left on my lease. So if we can make it four and a half years, that'd be great.
I think six months is good and reasonable.
We'll do the best we can within six months. And if it does become an issue, maybe I can get with Mr. Whitten, and we can have that conversation again. Sure.
Commissioner Hardwick, I saw you lit up there for a second.
I did, but you guys just answered my question. I was going to say, we don't want any planning shrugs in June.
July, they're going to die.
Yeah, exactly.
Needs to be this fall.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve with all staff comments. Can I get a second on that, please? Got a second from Commissioner Silkwood. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all seven.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up on the agenda is site plan for McCarroll Heating and Air. Grant, it looks like you and Sidney were on this one. Do we have a representative from McCarroll here on that? Grant, I'm going to let you get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a site plan for additional square footage for McCarroll Heating and Air, located at 231 Molly Walton Drive. This consists of a new 5,000-square-foot building, as well as a 2,400-square-foot addition to their current 10,078-square-foot building. So in looking at this, they're adding a building to the east of the existing building. And the materials are essentially going to match... The exterior materials are going to match what's up there, more or less. A lot of APHIS and metal, and sods proposed. They've been industrial. That is generally consistent with that area and that zoning. So there was no issues with the design review there. The one thing we did notice on this, we don't have any record, that they have gotten the sidewalk, that they've ever had a sidewalk fee-in lieu for that property with the new building there and the addition. It is... It does kick in the sidewalk requirement. However, they have requested a waiver for the fee-in lieu or construction of a sidewalk. The city has no plans for walkability in that area. So we don't have any... We don't have any issue with a fee-in lieu or a waiver of either. But we did want to bring that to your all's attention as far as something to address with this submittal. They have agreed with all their staff comments.
Thank you, Grant. Do introduce yourself if you have anything that you want to add, please.
Oh, yeah. Kyle Schneider with Clover Engineering, representing the owner. I think Grant pretty much covered it. I mean, we agree with everything. And, yeah, just looking for the waiver for the sidewalk. I mean, Molly Walton is recently developed, within the last fifteen, twenty years. There's no sidewalks there. It's all industrial. I mean, as Grant said, the city has no plans for walkability in that area. It shouldn't come down to the property owner to pay for sidewalks in another part of the city then. Yeah, that's about all I have.
Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? We have a motion from Commissioner Evans to approve. And we have him in a second on that. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
All right. That's all seven. Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is Jackson Townhome's site plan amendment. Grant, you were the lead planning staff on this. And we have a representative from developers here on that as well. Grant, will you kind of go and get us started, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a kind of a long story here on this project. The current builder has purchased the Jackson Townhome property with the development rights from the previous owner and the original applicant, the development plan and the site plan. So this was purchased after it was approved. Zone multifamily residential plan development, located off East Main Street and Stop 30 Road. And one of the main things that we've... The current issues that we've run into with this project is the doors are higher on the building than what was actually part of the approved renderings. And then the developer has... Talking with him, he said that we've required that the doors to be higher. And of course, we had some issues previously during the first of the construction where they were adding enclosed entryways, which were not part of the renderings. We had them remove that. And then I think there was, you know, a question about if the doors could be higher or not, just because of how it affects the inside of the building, which, you know, from our perspective, it's like we don't really... However it's done on the inside of the building, we don't really care, you know, as far as, as long as it meets any architectural plans that have been submitted to code. So where the door was, as long as it is aesthetically pleasing and everything, we didn't mind where the doors were located. So... But generally, we want everything to match what's on the approved plans. So we just had them remove the enclosure on the entryways. I think there's a picture later on, and we'll see that later in this presentation. But basically, what happened was, when the doors were raised, it left no... It extended the steps out where, on the approved plans, there was a sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk, and I think a two-foot grass strip on the south side. And then a grass strip also on the north side that was part of that. Now, there were a lot of driveway breaks that interrupted that. So the actual effectiveness of it was, you know, questionable. But it certainly had a major look on the aesthetics of that area from what was actually approved and what was actually constructed here. And I think we've got some pictures. There's some dimensions there. And let's go back to the slide with the picture of the steps. So if you look at the doors and where they're placed, that's quite a bit higher than the garage door. Probably three to four feet, I would say, without actually getting in and measuring that. And then if you go back to the rendering, it shows how the door... The bottom of the door is lower than the garage door there. So that's a big part of the difference in that that we've noticed that's caused a lot of the issues with how the streetscape on this looks. And then two of the sets of steps here on the north side actually extend to the roadway. So that, where that edge of concrete is, is where the asphalt will begin. So this is actually where the asphalt... So it would be stepping right out into the street there on two of those where there's... And if you look at the approved plans, there was about, on the dimension sheet, the approved dimensions, you know, there was a good bit of area between the actual landings and the... Yeah. Between the landings and the... So, and the edge of pavement, so, or edge of concrete. So that's kind of... It's a big difference in how that actually works. So I guess we'll keep on going on the next slide. And we did notice that there was, you know, this is the first seventeen units. And there's twenty-eight units that are still to be constructed on the north side. So if you... We've talked to the developer, and he said that this will be, you know, corrected for those units. But for these, it's an issue that we can't resolve at the staff level, because it's such a major issue. But, but for these, it's, it's, it's an issue that we, we can't resolve at the staff level because it's such a major issue in how the, the actual development looks. And let's see. They have shown additional landscaping as part of this application. We, we don't have, really have an explanation of what this is for. I guess, you know, I assume it's in lieu of the grass strip. But we'd requested, sounded like a, a letter showing the, the changes that, that were made and why they're made and kind of, kind of, you know, list of things of what needs to be done here. So, and why they're submitting this and why we're, you know, why the changes were made. So, we don't have that. So, we're just kinda reviewing the site plan based on what it looks like compared to what's approved, so. And then there's some renderings there showing the differences in the landscaping and the, it is a little bit off because the, the currently approved plan does have some trees in there. However, this is the, the bottom, this is the, the rendering for the increase in landscaping there. So, it's not really bare at the top. There's, there's some trees and stuff, trees and shrubbery that are part of the approved plans, but just not, not that significant. And, but it, it kinda looks like it's bare there on the, the top, top one, except for that shadow of that tree there. And so in looking at that, that's, that's some of the other changes that they made. We have some pictures showing that as well, that I believe are part of the presentation there. They have went ahead and installed some of those landscaping. And so it appears to be, you know, good quality landscaping that they put in, so that's good. And if we continue on with the slide there, there's, thank you, on the, on the, we had some other discussion about the, the existing overhead utilities. And this has been ongoing for, for probably three to four months, we're just looking at this. NES, we spoke with NES and essentially on the combined development plan, this was approved under the site plan and the NES service plan. There's three poles out there that were existing poles. NES looks, has said that they look at these as existing poles that they can provide service off of, essentially like they would off of Main Street. And, and looking at that and talking with them, you know, they, their NES service plan did not have these buried as part of the development, you know, with, as underground utility. So, so they have, they have shown that on their service plan as, you know, crossing that, there's a stream back there that they cross with overhead. And, and if you look at their email that they provided us, they've, they've essentially said, this is, this is how we're servicing this project. And, and they are gonna run underground off of these poles. But, but they, they did not, they did not choose to, to put those existing poles underground, but they replaced them though. And in doing so, they made the, the length of that service line, they, they decreased that. But, but there's still three poles out there. And so that's, that's one of the other issues that we've, we've had with this project. Which that may not be something that the, may or may not be something the developer can, has control of, so. And then there's a explanation letter about something that, you know, with the last meeting that we had with them. I guess going back and looking at this, this is the entryways that were originally, I kinda talked about earlier. This is kinda how the entryways, the doors were lower at that time. And they had the entryways like extending out, which, which was, were not part of the approved plans. So, so we let them know that this, that had to be removed. Or at least the, just, just, we needed to match the actual approved renderings there. So, so they have done that. And, but in doing so, the, the doors were raised up quite a bit higher. And we did have another issue come up last year in 2022. Some of the first units that were constructed, the roof pitches were quite a bit, quite a bit flatter than what, what they actually have constructed out there now, what was approved on the approved renderings. We actually required that the developer tear that roof off and replace the roof with a, with a roof that, that meets the pitch on the, on the rendering. So, I can't believe, I can't remember, the 712, or I can't recall what, what that pitch was. But, but yeah, that's one thing that we've, we've run into. There's been, there's been other items, just, you know, I think this is something that, in my staff comment, the, the actual approved combined development plan shows five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the road. But whenever it came to the site plan approval from the previous owner, the engineer stated that they didn't have room for sidewalks on both sides of the road. And they've, they removed the sidewalks on the north side in order to make room for everything. So, so they, they have, the previous owner had that change done, so, and that changed approved. So, this was brought back to us, you know, and actually constructed with, with no sidewalk on, on this section, on this 17-unit section. So, so there's just been a lot of issues that we've, we've had that have occurred here. And Keith, do you have anything else on this that we, we need to bring up on as far as this goes?
No, I think, I think Mr. Green probably covered it, covered it very well. I think as we can all see from what Mr. Green explained and, and looking for, for everybody that's been, had an opportunity to go out to the site, you know, look at the staff report and look at the images, this is just really a bad situation. You know, it's a bad situation that's looking for a solution. And I think where we're at, at this point, you know, from the last meeting that we had with the, with the developer and, and engineer at that time, you know, what we were, what we were really looking for is a creative way from the developer to resolve the issue or for, at least for the planning commission, you know, to consider. And I think, at least at this point, you know, what we have is basically kind of, this is what it is. And kind of, I guess, an ask of can you just approve it like it is? I think, I think the challenge is, you know, especially with the, two of the, two of the steps, the one that's coming right out in the street and the other one that's, that's pretty close to it. I mean, those are real, real challenges. And, and I think where we're at from a staff standpoint, and probably a planning commission as well, is still looking for what is that creative solution of how this, you know, of how this can get, can get resolved. We're certainly sensitive to the fact that the existing developer was not the original developer. But by taking on that from the original developer, they take all of the responsibility of that as well. So, you know, we understand that's, you know, that's difficult. And one thing I might note, and you might have seen it on the images, but you, just looking out there, you wouldn't really know it. There's actually not only the steps that are outside there, there's a landing and five, four or five treads of steps inside, you know, after you get into that, you know, get into that door as well. So, but that's kind of, I think Grant covered everything, everything very well. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Free.
If you want to introduce yourself, if you have anything you wanna add before I open up, the questions, comments from commissioners, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Zach Wilkinson, Greenlee Design, we're the civil on the project, and also Chance Alfred here, he's the developer. I think Grant, or Mr. Green, I'm sorry, and Mr. Free did a really good job of summarizing some of the challenges that we're having right now. And ultimately, we're trying to figure out and looking for input from this body to figure out the best way to kinda keep the project moving forward. There's been mistakes made, we wanna figure out how to address them in the best manner we can. I think a couple different things to keep in mind, the drive is a private drive that's servicing this, it's servicing 18 units, so it's not a high-traffic area. I think that's one thing to keep in consideration. And also, the, well, let me start, I guess, the easy, low-hanging fruit. As far as the electric pole situation, the developer has no control over that, that's NES's call. Developer has no objection to, I mean, we're doing underground on everything that he can, but NES ultimately makes that call. So, even, there's nothing he can do about that on that end of it. As far as coming up with, I guess, a creative way to try to address the situation, what we have proposed is the landscaping, and I apologize for not having a letter. Our office should have had a letter kinda explaining, hey, what, what this proposal is. But to try to, from the main road, cover, or one, try to add some additional landscaping to make up for the grass strip that's not gonna be put in. Now, we would also make the argument that a two-foot grass strip doesn't really do a lot. And usually those end up getting paved over eventually anyways. But we, I mean, we wanna put that additional landscaping in there to try to add some more aesthetic appeal to that area. And it also, if you're driving by, looking down that road, it does help, we feel like it'll help cover up those stairways going into the road, so it might not be quite as noticeable. Other than that, I mean, I guess, we're open to creative solutions. We've, we've met with staff and with fire department out there, trying to look at, hey, could we narrow the road in this area to allow for, to get this sidewalk in? It's not that we don't wanna get it in, it's just based on where we're at at this stage in the development. There's, I mean, without going into much detail, I know the plans were approved. And then another set, I think there's staff change, and then another set was redone, and then developer change. So, it's kinda been a comedy of errors in some cases. But ultimately, at this point, we wanna do whatever we can to make it right, to address the situation. And we're looking at this body for input on that and wanna do what we can to make it where everybody's happy with what's not an ideal situation.
Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Martin?
Hey, how you doing?
Doing good.
So, are you with the civil engineer or the architect or builder?
The civil engineering firm.
Okay, who's the architect and builder?
The builder is Chance Alfred. The architect on this project was, I'm honestly not su, I think, I know Cumberland was the landscape architect, but the actual building architect, was there a architect involved in this?
Yes, we.
Yeah, come on up.
Yep. I'm Chance Alfred. When we purchased the property, there was a concept plan, construction drawings from Sean Jackson's architect. I don't remember the actual architect firm. We used one of our third-party architects to tweak the staff changes that they wanted done to the plans. But we, we pretty much were told, you know, it's obviously a learning curve from us purchasing a project with plans and a development. But when we purchased it, we did not realize that the architectural plans that were developed for this plan, you know, once we started building, there, the front door with entering the hallway with the stairs coming up from the garage, there was no way to come up from the garage and have the steps there. That's why we, you know, dropped the door down. Obviously, it was not an approved exterior plan, so that did not work. So, we, you know, raised it back up to where the door was. So, to answer your question, you know, we did use the original architectural plans that was submitted originally. We had to make some, a few tweaks to it for codes and firewalls and stuff like that to the plans, but it was the original set of plans for that.
So, looking at the original drawings, the lowering of the door was actually pretty sound.
Right.
Because you can only go up to 12 feet before you have to have an intermittent landing. And right now, you're over 12 feet. So, not only where the, where the bait, where the bottom of the stairs are, you're gonna have to push it out another five feet. Which is something we're gonna, I guess, you're asking us to help you resolve.
Right.
Would, another problem that we've got is that the stairs have to be uniform width and depth. It hasn't be the same all the way down. So, when I went out there, all the bottom steps are maybe three inches, seven inches. It just, what happens is people come down the stairs and then they miss that step and then there's an accident. So, that's another concern. Have you thought of other things, maybe an interior stair or something to get you past these original units? It sounds like you guys have a solution worked out for the other ones, and we're just kinda dealing with this one pocket.
Right. So, so on the back, you know, what we're going to do is obviously drop the door down where they're supposed to be. And then we're gonna reconstruct the interior steps where there's a landing instead of going, I think there was one picture where the door was open, where you could see the steps going inside straight up. We're gonna have a landing and those steps will go to the left. So, it won't interfere with the steps coming up from the garage to, that picture right there. Those steps won't go directly up, they'll go to the side right there. So, it, it won't, it won't matter the height of that to interfere with the steps coming up from the garage, if that makes sense. So, and I would like to make a note that, yes, this is not exactly per the plan on this. But if this was gonna happen, it happened to the best units because honestly, the only people that can see these 17 doors are the 17 people that live there. It's blocked by trees, fences, you can't see these from Gallatin Road. You know, and we've got a plan alleviated to fix this in the back, which you would be able to see the buildings in the back, and it would be an issue. But, but from an appearance standpoint, you know, you're, no one's gonna see these but the people that live at these houses. And that's why we're trying to add the, the landscaping and to do, you know, anything we can to make it look better. And I'm open for suggestions of what you guys think, you know, we'll be willing to do anything to, you know, to make this work, so.
So, I was looking over the meeting minutes, it sounds like there was a change. You guys kinda just did whatever, kinda did something different than what you had talked to the inspectors and other guys. What was driving those changes?
In regards to?
It sounded like you added things that weren't on the approved drawings and made some other changes.
The only thing that we changed was, you know, recognizing building, before we built the staircase, I realized that we were gonna have that many steps going down. And, you know, just being completely honest, never dealt with the city of Hendersonville, built in a lot of other counties. And me moving a door down three feet, they don't, you know, it's not, you know, a huge deal. And obviously, I learned my lesson when I got the phone call from Grant. And so, we, we fixed that issue and made it, you know, back to the way it was supposed to be.
Alright, so, and looking at the meeting?
I might need to just explain one thing, just.
Yeah.
So, so on, as the picture will show, on the original, when it kinda had the doghouse enclosure, the doors were actually at the proper height. So, the, the change occurred when, when, when that alteration happened because all, the whole roof was taken off because the pitch wasn't correct, there were a couple other things. And at that time, then the door, these doors here, then those were shifted up.
So. Right, but those are, those are below 12 feet, so you don't need an intermittent landing, that's correct.
That's correct. So, that's what, you know, kinda created that.
And we did that because obviously, when you come in a door, you gotta, you can't walk straight into a step, you gotta have a landing area and then go up. So, we enclosed the door. We still, and I, when we had the staff meeting, I was still going to, you still would have had, you know, a four-foot landing right there with the post and that, it just would have been extended out a little bit. Probably should have went to the planning commission at that point and got that portion of it approved for the stage that we're at. But I thought we would be okay with where we were at, and obviously, you know, that didn't happen, so. And as far as the roof pitch goes, there was, you know, obviously, I took this, you know, I, I've tried to do everything from the beginning to appease adjacent neighborhoods and keep everybody happy and be, you know, to, to build a good product in the city of Hendersonville. I live here, I wouldn't want my name on that, you know, something that, that's talked about. But on the, you know, on the approved set of plans on the, on the drawings, there was no, and I think, you know, you could ask Greg on this, there was no, you know, roof pitch that was, you know, we, there was a picture of a roof pitch, but there was no elevation, there was no roof pitch on the actual drawings of what it actually, the standard of what it had to be, it was a picture. So, it's kinda speculation of that, and I did not realize that. So it was kind of speculation at that, and I did not realize that, you know, it needed to look exactly like the picture, and there wasn't a, a roof pitch requirement on that. And that's why we, you know, but of course, didn't fight it, wanted to, it was the first building, wanted to, you know, make everything right, keep everybody happy, spent a hundred grand, ripped the roof off, and made it right.
Did the architect help you with the payment on that?
Sure, yeah.
Who was the architect again, you said?
I don't, I don't remember the actual architect that Shawn had to do that, because we used the original plans, the approved plans. I was told, these are the plans that you used, these are approved, this is what you're supposed to use, and-
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my last question before I turn it over is, you said in your meeting that it was cost prohibitive to do some of the solutions, including rework the stairs, you could, you're locked into modular dimensions when you use brick for entry stairs. If you do cast-in-place, you have a lot more control. So instead of the six-inch riser, you can go up to seven or eight, or-
Correct.
You've got a lot more flexibility. So that was cost, that was something you didn't like?
The, we would have done it, but the approved picture on the plans had brick stairs, so I thought I had to use, because I got-
I meant as far as a solution from the last meeting.
That was never brought up, that I could do that, it was only the door height then for that. But I mean, we would have, I would have loved to save five grand a staircase and put those in, that would have been lovely.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
It, it's hard to find anything to say, but I, I don't know of anywhere where stairs, steps land on the street. And, and that just, that just can't happen in, in, in my mind. But secondly, I, I know that somehow we had a set of plans, and somehow we approved, I, I wasn't here then, but this body approved a set of drawings, and it's incumbent on the builder to follow those drawings and to follow the requirements of, of, of what was laid out. And, and I, I feel for you, I agree that bottom step, I, I know there's a, there's a, a term for that, that the steps have to be, that they have to follow a certain rhythm or cadence or whatever. Those bottom steps are, are all different heights, and, and how that, how that got that way, I'll never know. But this is another classic example of trying to cram everything we can on every postage-stamp-sized piece of property we've got, and, and we just can't do that. Oh, it's, it's not incumbent on the planning department to come up with a solution for you. I wish they could. They're very intelligent people, and they're very smart people, they've got, but they've got a big job to do. But, but what my suggestion and my motion would be is that we deny U and O on these until somebody brings us a solution that the planning department is, is, is happy to bring to us as a recommendation, while at the same time denying any further permits on the second phase of this thing until these are fixed. I just don't, I just don't see how we can let this go on like it is, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Commissioner Evans, would you repeat that motion just specifically with the motion that you're making?
I'm sorry.
Would you repeat the motion specifically that you made?
My motion is that we, that we do not approve the variance that is being requested, if that is in fact what's being requested, and that we hold up the U and O, these things can't be lived in until the solution is, is arrived at, a solution that, that the planning department is, is happy to bring to this body to approve, and that we further hold up any further develop, developers' progress on the second phase back behind this one until this is fixed.
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to interrupt it, we do have a, I mean, I've got a few ideas of potential solutions before, do you mind if we discuss that before this vote occurs? Couple, one thing, I'd like to know, what is the, the biggest concern? Obviously, we're, there's a couple different, there's several concerns with the existing situation, I get it. What is the biggest concern, so we can try to focus on addressing that? If it's purely a safety thing, I, I think we've got some potential solutions that might, might satisfy this body, that I'd be happy to present. If it's an aesthetics thing, I feel like the landscaping is one step towards addressing that. But if there's other issues too, whether it's tonight, or we bring something back to you, would like to make sure we've got a really clear picture of what are the biggest concerns from this body. We know there's multiple ones, so we want to make sure we're putting the biggest emphasis on the ones that are most important to this body. Because I don't, I don't think we can magically make it all right. I mean, I, I think in the world we live in, it, that's not possible, but we would like to try to make as many people as happy as possible to hope, to hopefully make this body happy with it.
Commissioner Evans-
Clearly, you can't-
We'll start with you and just kind of run down.
Pardon me?
You've got a motion on the floor, so we'll start with you and then run down. We've got several folks that will chime in on this, so.
Clearly, you can't fix all of it, okay, because you can't move the buildings further apart at this juncture, you can't do that. You can't widen the street, you can't put in the sidewalk that was supposed to be there, you can't put in the landscaping that was supposed to be there. You are putting in landscape that, as my understanding, hasn't been approved yet by this body or by the, by the planning department. So, the safety issues, yeah, the height of the bottom step, walking out on the street, landing on the street. I've got a problem with, I didn't, I didn't take a transit out there, or level, but, but I got a problem with the drainage, for crying out loud. This, I got several problems, but, but I'm, I'm waiting for the planning department to tell me that, that this is okay. I, I'm not a professional in that regard. But from what I'm seeing at this point, and what I've understood, I was out there twice today, trying to make sense out of it, and I just couldn't. So I'm going to stick with my motion to see if anybody wants to second it. If not, I'm just, I'm just one person here.
I'm going to second your motion, but I want to continue this discussion before we have a vote on that. Commissioner Silkwood.
Oh, I, I thought Mr. Hardwick was next.
He unlit his.
Okay. Just, just following up on what Commissioner Evans said, you know, you asked directly, what is our biggest, my biggest concern, obviously can't speak for the rest of the commission. My concern, obviously, is safety. These stairs seem unsafe, landing in the road when you exit the stairs, in the egress, obviously, not a safe situation. And apparently, you know, we only deal with exterior elevations, obviously, but apparently, are these the only stairs? There's no interior set of stairs from the garage?
There is an interior set of stairs in the garage, correct?
There is?
Yes.
Okay. So at least there's that, because I'm envisioning coming home, you know, a mom with a baby in a stroller, having to step into the road and carry the baby, the stroller, up this massive set of stairs after she steps into the road with all of that. So obviously, safety is the biggest issue. Landscaping is also a concern, but that's what I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Silkwood. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Hardwick?
I was just going to say, trying to resolve this, really seems to me that should be sitting at the staff level and come back to us with recommendations, versus us just having lots of back and forth. And, and I would prefer that that, that happened there and then come back to us with a solution. From, from a non-professional standpoint, could you just do away with the stairs and have direct entry into the garage, all the stairs be internal? But again, I think that is discussions, that, that's a planning decision. You guys may hate that and don't want to do that. I think this needs to be done between you guys and the developer.
I'll echo what Commissioner Hardwick said. You know, you ask what our biggest concern was. Safety's obviously going to be the biggest concern, so with that appropriate caveat, the aesthetics are just horrible, just looking at the lack of uniformity there on that, I mean, it just, it just, and then I know you all are in a tight spot, and I appreciate that, but at the same time, it just, I, I just have no words. No, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I, I would like for you all to really sit down with planning staff and put everything on the table on that, and it's, it's not going to be, I don't know what the solution is, I know it's not going to be cheap, but I need to look at everything to just kind of make this right, and, but it's, it's a mess, and it needs to be, it needs to be cleaned up before it comes back in front of skin. So we have a motion in a second. Do we have any other comments before we go to a vote? Can I say something? Yes, sir.
If, if we're going to come back with ideas and, you know, his comment on the metal stairs, I didn't even think that you guys would be okay with that, or I would have brought that up then. Is that something, I mean, you guys are going to be the ones voting on it, doing iron staircases, is that a viable option? I don't want to do that and make that the option for the staircases, and, you know, if we're, we're putting out options out there what to do, is that something that you guys would consider?
So, what I would recommend, if I can, don't mind me speaking, but I would recommend having an architect or somebody take a look at it and help you with a solution, because if it doesn't meet code, we can't do anything for you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. But if, that's, from an appearance and that standpoint, would that be appropriate, would that be an appropriate staircase, is what I'm asking?
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could speak-
Yes, sir.
I, I know on something like that, it's something that we would definitely want to have, like an updated rendering to show that-
Of course.
So that we, we could show them whenever it's brought back, so, but I think we, we could go through different solutions with that, but, but we just have to know how it looks before we, we could probably say, and I mean, if, if planning commission is okay with, with approving that, that's, that's fine, but I think we'd want to know what it looks like prior to approving that.
Director Free?
Yeah, I, I'd echo what Mr. Green said, and, and with this, which, what it sounds like, where the direction of it's going from the planning commission, then that's clear direction to the staff to work with the developer, but primarily for the developer to come up with what those solutions are. But I can tell you, the staff will be very open to that. We, we understand the situation, and we'll be looking to come up with a solution with you, with one you come up with, but then we evaluate and, and try to do that very quickly so we can get back to the planning commission for them to, for them to ultimately make that decision.
Okay. Second request, I know, you know, we talked about holding UNOs, and that, and I understand, you know, obviously, this has to be resolved before we do that, but obviously, from what the discussions I've seen is, the staircase is the ultimate issue with the stair landings. You know, I know we, we paused on NES releases and final inspections, electrical plumbing and, and all of that. Can we move forward, you know, can we get those released? And are we only focusing on the staircases at this point?
Yeah, that would, that would be, that would be determined by the planning commission on what they're directing the staff. At this point, from what I understand, the motion in the second, is that holding everything up until this issue gets resolved. And I think the, the main thing is with this grouping here of townhomes, is to make sure nobody moves in and nobody, and there is any transfer of, of the units until this gets, until-
And I understand that, I'm not, the, the UNO is the transfer of units, but all the other inspections, releasing NES so I can put the meters, I only have meters on five units before this happened. You know, we're getting into summer, you're looking at humidity, I need to get the AC running in 17 units. It's not, no one's going to move in until we resolve this issue, but we're going to have some serious damage in there if we don't, if we don't get our plumbing inspections where we can release that stuff. Obviously, we're holding UNOs, I, I, I get that, but-
I think the, the key, the key position probably with the staff would be that holding UNOs where nobody is occupying the buildings.
Okay.
And I think that's the, that's the main, the main thing.
Okay. Commissioner Evans, is your motion, would you concur? With that, we have a motion on the floor, we have, Commissioner Evans, I seconded. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
And just to clarify, this is to deny the requested variance and hold up the use and occupancy permits with no one occupying those units and denying permits in the second phase of the development until a solution is arrived at with staff to come back to the planning commission for approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. All right, so Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
I'm going to abstain, thank you.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery is absent. Silkwood?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
All right, that is all seven.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is item nine, staff-level projects approved. I'll turn this over to Director Free if he wants to lead us through what's going on here.
I'll just answer any questions, for time, I'll just answer any questions that anybody would have of any of those projects that have been approved and the projects that are pending. I would just note, on the projects that are pending, we're continuing to work with Chick-fil-A to redo their drive-through, and the, the way they're going to redo their drive-through this time, this actually is going to be a significant improvement to the stacking, and I think it's going to resolve a lot of the existing stacking issues that the previous improvements did not. Also, I just might give a little quick update. Whataburger is still moving forward, we're closer, we just had a meeting with them about a week ago, we're closer to a final elevation with them, and it's looking, looking really good, they're working very well with us, and this is going to be a very, very attractive Whataburger. Also, also, some of you have asked about the Tesla charging station, that's on pending, Tesla did not get back with us, so we haven't heard back from them, from the last, last meeting. But I can answer any questions anybody might have on any of those items.
Questions, comments from commissioners?
Is, where's the raising canes?
Raising canes, the existing building down here on the corner of Main Street and Indian Lake Boulevard has already been raised, or been demolished, and, and they're, they're going to be starting construction any day, so that will be, will be moving forward. And then they did also, there were, there were a couple different small tweaks that they worked with staff on after the approval of the planning commission, and they stepped up and, and really did, did a good job on, on the building. I think it's, it's going to be a very attractive building, so.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any other comments from the director before entertaining a motion to adjourn?
We've got the Tailgate Brewery-
I'm sorry, I skipped right over that, I'm sorry.
Just for discussion.
Yeah. Item 11 on the agenda, Tailgate Brewery discussion. Representative from the developer up here.
Sorry, I blew right past that, it's-
That's okay, it's late.
You've sat through all this, and you-
I've had a nice time, though, thanks for including me.
Can you introduce yourself?
I'm Wesley Keegan, I'm the owner and founder of Tailgate Brewery.
I know you wanted to kind of discuss your project a little bit, and I, I know staff has been kind of working on this.
A lot, they've been great.
Yes. And I think the last time that you were here, just kind of back us back up to last time when you were here, and I know there was some discussion over the mural, that sort of thing-
Yep.
You wanted to just kind of get some thought process, and so you kind of sense of where we were on that, if my understanding is correct on this.
Yes, yeah, so the short summary is, I requested of Timothy and Keith to come in and talk to everybody to kind of get a better understanding of how we can process the full project, because it's taking time. Stuff like painting the building, presenting a mural, and discussing kind of the mural plans. Unfortunately, was at our manager's retreat the last time we came up, and representative that came didn't quite understand what to do besides our first drawing that we had that, that we didn't like. So, we were kind of stuck, and it's why I haven't been back for months, is I was trying to understand, how do I reconcile between the city requirements and the architect and the pace that things happen with the architect and so on? And so as we were having these conversations, I just, can I just come tell everybody what we'd like to do, and then work with the staffing, I think that's the right word, right, with Timothy and Keith, to kind of finish up the, the final pieces to it. So where we're at today is, we've done an updated rendering of what we'd like to do is paint the building off-white, because we've kind of been stuck to paint it, which I think was my understanding, my misunderstanding, pardon me. But we wanted to talk about extending the existing patio, putting some artwork on there, we put murals on all of our buildings, and I think the primary question today is a mural approval. And I think the primary question today is a mural approval. I think that's my big question.
Questions, comments from commissioners? I know we spent a lot of, it's been several months ago now, but I know that we spent a lot of time on this several months ago, discussion mural and colors and all that sort of thing. So, Commissioner Martin?
I was just gonna say, I talked to the folks in our Ward Two, which is near Ward One, shared the before and after images and I've received nothing but, but a good comment, so.
Cool. Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll just kinda ask, I mean, I like the, I like the scheme that you're going for.
Yeah.
Do you know anything about the inspira- and I'm assuming you weren't the artist on this.
It is my idea.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a, yeah. Unfortunately, everything's my idea.
Okay.
I'm the only owner and so I started everything myself. We have over a hundred and fifty employees total now, but our artists, our full-time artists on our team is kind of the execution and then we kind of develop this stuff together.
Okay, very cool.
Yeah.
Well, tell me a little bit about the inspiration for this revised.
Of this mural?
Yes.
So, originally what we were talking about and the one we brought out was something that we wanted to reflect the lake. And then as we were talking to planning, we kind of understood that maybe a little more subtle was gonna be a better move. And in my mind, you know, seeing that we're not really gonna see much of it anyway, if we can kind of work with staff to kind of figure out the final steps on the patio, which is kind of a simple extension, you know, I wasn't too concerned with what it was originally gonna be. I just know that it looks like hell right now and I wanted to fix that. So, we went a different direction and on the left side, it's, it's a mash tun and we went with butterflies as kind of like the theme to just kind of create a lot of color. And we've got a mural like this in Chattanooga where there's a girl that's mashing out and that paint just kinda splatters across the whole building, which turns out to be pretty cool. It's subtle, doesn't take up the whole thing. And then the other side, it's just one of our tap handles that was not me, was the artist put Tailgate on backwards. But we, we would write it the right way when we paint it, for sure. But then again, just like, kinda just taking off, there's a, there was a, an art piece in Columbia that had this kinda like butterfly inspiration, the country Columbia, that we kind of blended with this and that was kinda the inspiration for it. We just like a lot of colors and we really like it to be family-friendly, we like it to be welcoming, and we wanted to try and make sure that it amended to the feedback that we got the last time we came up here. But before going down that path, it does get really complicated and expensive fast. So, doing the renderings gets difficult and then art becomes open to opinion. So, before I got too far down that path, I wanted to make sure that we were on the right direction and then could then work with staff to kinda finish up the final pieces with our, I guess, phase two construction that's currently underway.
I appreciate that feedback. I don't know who saw it up first, but I remember my managers.
Ladies first.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it was Mr. Evans first.
Yeah, but we're, we're gonna remember our managers. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say, I think the mural, this new mural is a big improvement over the other one. The other one was beautiful.
Yeah.
I, I did like it, but I did think it was a bit bold of a choice for Hendersonville.
Yeah.
I, I like this one much better.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Bold is kind of our thing, but we also wanna blend with the community. Like I said, that place in Chattanooga is like a hundred-year-old building, which is why we had to mute it as well, which was some of the inspiration here. So, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Commissioner Silkwood and I kinda disagreed the last time on the mural thing. I, I think again, because of the size of it and, and that sort of thing, this is much more subtle and, and it is quite attractive.
I appreciate that.
And I, I don't have any problem with a mural like that, but the, the sunburst across the front of the building, that was a bit too much. I think you still, don't we have a, a little bit of an issue with the, with the signage across the, the top?
Director Free.
Yeah, more than likely, the, and we discussed that, the Tailgate Brewery sign probably would be close to what would be allowed. Chances are the Hendersonville at that size wouldn't be, cuz it'd be a part of the signage, but, but we would work that out later on a sign permit to make sure it was the appropriate, appropriate size.
Love you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and this, you know, we brought this, is a little bit different. We brought this up for discussion. It wasn't necessarily for action this evening, but if it was, you know, so moving forward with it could be just giving feedback to the owner and then they submit something and it comes back to the, to the, to the planning commission, or it could, this could be something that you could, if you wanted to take action on it, if you felt comfortable with the image of the mural and then just directed staff to work with, work with them to do it at a staff level, you know, we could do that. But, so those are really the two ways. We weren't really looking to, expectation of taking action, but mostly wanted to get the response on the, on the mural from the planning commission.
Yeah, that's correct. Just looking to make sure that we can expedite and get to work, cuz understand the previous mural wasn't the most popular here, but what it looks like now is definitely worse and we wanna fix that.
Sound like times of the essence.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I'll make a, oh, Timothy. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I did just get, wanna get one thing kinda on the board as, as far as the, the last image in the staff report that I did regarding parking upgrades, the landscaping that's shown there, all the green area, that is something that I've put together, or whether it's, it's based on some assumptions. Those assumptions being that the deck will incur, that the proposed new deck would incur a need for future parking, because currently, I believe they're maxed out on parking and they'll have room to add more parking and they would, again, my assumption is they would have to request a waiver for any additional parking using the hardship reduction ordinance that's in the ordinance, ordinance that allows buildings older than twenty-five years to request a reduction from the planning commission of up to twenty-five percent of their parking. So, it, again, assuming that happens and assuming the planning commission grants that waiver, it kinda makes sense to staff to take that landscaping that would otherwise have accompanied the parking that they would have provided and pour it back into the old parking lot that is substandard. I believe we've talked with, with Mr. Keegan, there may, there may be a scenario where they don't need to ask for additional parking. They may be able to, you know, to change some things on the inside as far as their existing seating. Maybe, maybe they don't need any additional parking even with that patio. If that's the case, if they don't need additional parking, there would not be a trigger for additional landscaping that's shown here. They wouldn't need to do anything. Again, those are some assumptions that's to be worked out still.
Before entertaining a motion, I guess I just have, just a process question for the director's staff. We can obviously entertain a motion, make, pass a motion to just empower y'all to work with the applicant, but is, is that even necessary on this? Because is that even, because if everything is within the purview of staff to work this out anyways, are we making a redundant motion on, on things?
Yeah. The, the part of it that would be, is it murals, staff can approve murals. So, that's the rest.
Okay.
The rest of it, I, I believe we could approve it. We can't prove, approve a reduction in the parking requirement, but if that's ends up not being necessary, we can do everything at a staff level. It's just the mural, we can't, we can't do that at the staff level.
Okay.
And I think that's why I came to a discussion, is the, the steps of the, of painting and building and, you know, all the different pieces we have to kind of put in place.
Yeah.
We just wanted to make sure that we were doing things the right way the first time, because even beyond this, I mean, the architects take forever.
Yeah. On the parking, cuz I, it's been stressed here, the time is of that, since we don't wanna hold you up on this. And it sounds like there's, there's some unanswered questions, but it seems like you and Timothy are on the same page on stuff, on what we're wanting to do.
Yeah, he knows the rules better than I do.
Yeah.
But if I can, if I can even support what he was saying, there's been an amendment to the site plan, cuz when we got in there, we realized that the existing restrooms were space that we should keep, cuz the plumbing was there and all that kinda stuff. So, we've redrawn it and I don't know that he has it yet, but that's gonna change the available seating and then it is a restaurant, so, I mean, more than fifty percent of our sales is food. So, it's a restaurant first. And then, you know, there's been some smart conversations about like, our total occupancy is at no point ever gonna be one hundred percent. So, like I can use, our biggest example is our HQ location in West Nashville. Friday night, we could have three hundred people outside and like ten inside. We're not gonna use all those seats. And then, pretty similar here. I mean, if the weather's nice here, we're gonna wanna sit outside and inside's gonna be open. So, I mean, it might even be something that we talk about as a max occupancy, just gonna be a total, like a flex number, cuz at no point are we gonna hit it off of chairs. And those are the things that they've been super helpful with me trying to understand what those rules are.
Okay.
But where it stopped was, we can't solve the mural. So, I just wanna paint the building cuz it looks like crap, you know?
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Any commissioner wanna make Nobody be bashful here.
Well, I haven't been bashful all night, so.
Yeah, there would be.
Yeah, there would, there would be necessary motion on the mural and it would be something like, direct the staff to work with the applicant on the concept of that mural and as long as it stays within the concept of what's viewed tonight, then that could be approved at a staff level with, with the rest of the improvements.
Would we be trying to throw in too much if we included parking if need be on that or is that?
You could, yeah.
Okay.
You could throw it in there.
Well.
Commissioner. I'm okay with the staff working with them on this to get, to get things going. I'm fine with the mural thing. What concerns me is if you build a deck.
Mm-hmm.
Which causes the parking to be compromised, then it's gotta come back here, which, which kinda puts everybody in a, in a, in a pickle.
Mm-hmm.
So, would it be appropriate to make a motion to have the staff work on this, provided that there is no need for a waiver for parking?
Yes.
Does, does that work?
That's super helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, that gives me some direction. Appreciate that.
Okay. So, we have a motion.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
That's the motion. We second it from Commissioner Martin. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the help tonight.
Absolutely. And since I tried to skip ahead a minute ago, planning director comments?
Yes, and I will go through these fairly quickly, but I do have a, a couple of different things. One, one sad bit of information that I need to share with everybody, it's good news, but it's bad news for us, is Lauren Berry has, has been with us for about seven years and she is taking a great opportunity for another position. So, her last working day here at City Hall will be Friday. And so, Lauren's done a great job. She's very professional and she's a great asset to, to the planning department and to the greater city government. And we just really appreciate the dedication and the hard work that she's done over the years and just wish her, wish her the very best. And before I have any of these other things, is there anything that you wanna, wanna say, Lauren?
Sure. I actually wrote a few things down, cuz you kinda warned me, so I didn't wanna forget anything. So, about seven years ago, I found a newspaper advertisement for a part-time job here at the city of Hendersonville. I didn't know at that time what planning was or what a planning commission or BOMA was, but Fred Rogers took a chance on a college student who had some experience with blueprints and he hired me as an administrative secretary for the planning department. About a year later, Keith Free promoted me to planning assistant and in this role, I've had the opportunity to work with and learn from the absolute best. I am so thankful for the planning department, my coworkers who have become friends and, and family. They have celebrated major life milestones with me and they have encouraged me to grow personally and professionally. I would also like to give special thanks to Keith, who is honestly the best boss and mentor anyone could ask for. He brings out the best in his staff and his words and character motivate and inspire us. I am extremely fortunate to have worked under his leadership. It has been an absolute pleasure working for the city of Hendersonville and I am truly, truly grateful for my time here. So, thank you all for giving me the skills and the confidence to begin this next chapter. So, I'll be around. I'll miss y'all. Thank you.
Thank you ver- thank you very much, Lauren. As you can see, just gonna, gonna be a great loss, you know, for, for us. But, you know, it's something in the planning department and really in the greater, greater city government, we have, we have such great professionals and we encourage our professionals to grow. Sometimes that grows out of the position, goes out of, out of the city, but that's okay because, you know, we have such a high level of professionalism of folks that have dedicated themselves to, to, to government and, and Lauren is just an exemplary example of that. So, we appreciate you. Okay, so I had just a couple of other things. We are gonna have a, a future land use and transportation plan meeting for the Stop 30 Plan. That's gonna be in this room on Tuesday, June the twentieth at six PM. This is not a planning commission work session, but it is a public meeting for the Stop 30 Plan. It will be recorded and it will be live on YouTube. We're expecting quite a bit of attendance that evening and we would encourage and would like for all the planning commissioners that could attend, to attend. We probably will over the next month or so. We will have a separate work session for the planning commission, but if you can attend, it'd be great for you to be here in person to hear the comments from, from folks that, that attend. So, we're, we're excited about that. Our next meeting is a little bit different. It's falling on July the fourth. You don't have to come. We've, we've rescheduled that. It's actually gonna be on Monday, July the tenth. We will be sending something out. Caitlin Shin in our office will be handling all the things that Lauren has handled and so she'll be communicating with you. So, you'll start seeing her emails. And she worked with Lauren on the preparation of everything for tonight's meeting. So, we're already transitioning in that interim and she's been very helpful in that. Also, I wanna give you an update on Intergov, our Intergov software system. This is a software system for permitting and paying for permits and, and seeing where your permit's at and for us to do e-reviews and things like that. We've kinda been half in, half out as a city for the last five, six, seven years, but the city has, has had a new renewed commitment for a relaunch of Intergov and the city is completely in. I'm very excited about this cuz it's gonna be good for staff, but it's gonna be very good for the applicants and for the average citizen, where you can see and do things online and get a lot of questions answered. So, that's gonna be really good. And I'm really excited about how the city employees that are involved in this, how they have fully embraced this. And, and it's gonna be hard over the next couple of months as we make the transition, but we are excited about that. Also, one of the last things that Lauren did with me here is we're finalizing a new proposed fee schedule. So, all the fees for all the applicants, Florida Corps, for example, they all paid a fee to, for us to review their site plan. And so, in reviewing our fees that people pay for everything, we're substantially lower than we probably should be compared to our peer communities. But one of the things that we've done is we're doing something really quite different. We're changing our, most of our fees, we're changing them to, we've done some internal studies and determined how much time we've spent on different things at a staff level and then actually looked at what folks make here at the city and their benefits. And we're incorporating the majority of that so that we can truly cover our costs that are directly associated with an application. So, it won't be dollar for dollar on everything, but it's gonna be substantially different, but not burdensome to where someone's not gonna get a permit because it's so, so expensive. So, we're excited about that and we, we think that's important. We think this will be, this will be an example set for our other peer communities that, that might end up doing the same thing. So, that's still gotta go through a process, but we've, we've just finished that today on the draft of that and then we'll start that through a process with BOMA here shortly. Also, you know, we pick up signs and we, and now we pick up signs where you see on the side of the road that are illegal signs and we've had two part-time sign, sign enforcement officers and now we, we have one and. And, but we partner with our clean team that's cleaning places around town, so we're picking up signs, clean team is picking up signs, and so there's a lot of signs being picked up. Just like in April, just, just to share with you, it's like two-hundred-and-fourteen signs. So, you know, it's a lot of signs, and it makes a difference when you drive through our community. You may see signs every once in a while, but you won't see them there very long. As compared to other places, other communities, you can drive by, and there's seventeen feather signs that have been there for six months, and, you know, still campaign signs and things like that. But our, our city is committed to a higher standard on enforcement of those, and I just wanted to share that, share that with you. Also, one thing that's gonna change, you'll see on our agenda next month, there's some things that have stayed, changed with state law about public meetings and public comment, being the ability to have public comments typically on the Planning Commission, unless you have, we have a public hearing, the public can't really comment, you know, on anything. But we're working on something now, I think BOMA's gonna maybe come up with a policy. But starting in July, at our July meeting, we're gonna have public comments, I believe, on our agenda. So like at the first of the agenda, folks will have some limited opportunity just to speak, not during the meeting when we're talking about different things. So I just wanted to share that with, with you all as well. And that's everything that I had, Mr. Chairman, but the mayor may have something as well.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak on that last item real quickly?
Yes, sir.
So, the state gives us a little bit of guidance on that. Just to give you an idea, who has to have public comment opportunities? Our four standing committees, Planning Commission, the Beer Board, the BZA, everybody who makes a decision or makes a recommendation. That's pretty much everybody that, that meets. And so we're trying to come up with something standard among all the boards other than BOMA. I don't want to, I don't want to change BOMA to fit what everybody else does, and I don't think what BOMA does necessarily fits for y'all. So feel free, if you have some ideas, to, to send those to me. What we're thinking right now is maybe public comment, three minutes per person, limiting the number of people, limiting the amount of time, and that make sure that those comments regard something on the agenda, at the top of the agenda, and then later on, at the bottom of the agenda, have the opportunity for people to speak on items that are not. That's sort of where we're leaning right now, but I would love y'all's thoughts. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I don't know who made that one first, but I'm gonna give you both credit for that, so. Can I get a second on that, please? Second, yes, second from Commissioner Martin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Entering hearing none, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.